I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Education, January 11, 2023. For the record, I want to put that Don Beeler, Board Trustee, is participating remotely from 38724 U.S. Highway 19 North, Tarkpin Springs, Florida. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Memorial Resolution for Denise Hoskins, unanimously adopted by the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education at its regular meeting on Wednesday, January 11, 2023. Whereas Ms. Denise Hoskins was employed by the Monroe Woodbury Central School District as an English teacher, her employment with the district began September of 2007, and she retired in June of 2022. And whereas through her dedication to the district, Denise has touched the lives of many individuals in our district. It is hereby resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the entire district, extends in memoriam its appreciation and gratitude, as well as its sincere condolences to the Hoskins family. As the above resolution is adopted by the Board, it will become part of the official historical records of the district and will serve as a memorial lasting for all time. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mission Statement. We are committed to the academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Update or questions raised from interested citizens? We do not have any updates to report tonight. We also do not have any questions or comments from citizens tonight, so we move to State Assessments Presentation with Dr. Hassler and Dr. Kravitz.
Okay, thanks to the Board for giving us the opportunity to be able to present. I feel like it's been, it's been a couple of months that we've been talking about this presentation. I hope it lives up to the epic, the epic standard that was, that we talked about at the last Board of Ed meeting.
The students in the audience are lucky. You're lucky you get to see this one.
Yes. So first and foremost, we have a lot of people to thank for this presentation. When you talk about assessment results for students in sixth grades of the school district, that's nearly half of the school district. And so, you know, there are a lot of administrators, department chairs, and teachers who assisted in going through the data, discussing all of the items that we're going to be speaking about tonight. So thank you to, again, all the administrators, the department chairs, the teachers that have assisted in, in the review for the, for this presentation.
And I think one thing to note as, as we get started, in years past, the, these presentations have been, you know, largely about the, the scores. And tonight, it's, it's more than just the scores. So you'll see the scores that will be displayed, but also plans for how to address the scores and what we're doing at both the elementary and the middle school level. It's only three through eight, so this doesn't include K, there are some K1 overlaps, and obviously there'll be some things at the secondary level, but that will be the focus for tonight.
So when, when I gave the presentation in October to share the Regents' results from June of 2022, I, I began with a little bit of assessment background because those Regents' results were the first assessments that had been administered across the entire high school in all of the various content areas since pre-pandemic. So when, when Matt and I were talking about this presentation, we felt that it would be appropriate similarly to give some additional context about not only the, the background of the three through eight testing itself, but also the impact that the pandemic itself had on the various assessments. So first and foremost, all students are required to sit and take the three through eight ELA and math exams, with the exception of English language learner students who have been in the United States for less than one year as of April 1st from the time of testing. Those students have a one-year exemption on the ELA exam because the majority of them, they're non-English speakers, they're learning to acquire the language, so for them to sit and take an assessment in English is, is a little premature, so they give them a one-year exemption from that exam. Beyond that, students are required to, all students are required to sit for the exam. However, in 2015, State Ed started to report the number of students that were refusing to take the exam because it was right around that time when there was a movement across the state for students not to sit and take the exams. In the peak of the refusal movement, Monroe Woodbury had about approximately 50% of our kids, roughly, depending upon grade level, who were not participating. We will talk about later on in the presentation how our numbers of participation have gone up, so it's, it's a better opportunity for us to really speak about how our kids are performing. We still have work to do. There are still, you'll, you'll see that there are still some grade levels where students are not participating as much, and we're hoping in the years to come that those numbers will increase because ultimately, in order for us to be able to present holistically about how our kids are performing, ideally, you want as many kids to be able to participate as possible. We've also spoken about at various presentations how we're in the process of shifting from the New York State Common Core standards to the New York State Next Gen standards. The, the 20, the spring of 2022 three-through-eight assessments were the last round of assessments that were aligned to the Common Core standards. The spring assessments of 2023 will be the first assessments that are linked to the Next Gen standards, which they were originally, the Next Gen standards were approved in 2017, and the state gave school districts until 2023 to have them fully implemented, and we are prepared in order to be able to do that. Another shift that has taken place in recent years is the shift from paper-based testing to computer-based testing. In 2018, Monroe Woodbury began that shift. The first assessment that we administered on the computer was Grade III English Language Arts. We continued that shift into 2019, where the, the Grade III students who took the assessment on, on the computer in ELA rolled into fourth grade, so we administered the assessments on the computer to both third and fourth graders in 2019 on the computer. All other students took the assessments on paper, the way that they had traditionally. So later on in the presentation, we're going to compare our 2022 results to the 2019 results, but know that part of that is, in 2022, all students, three through eight, took the test on the computer for the first time. The reason why we chose to do that is because there's a rollout period for students to take the exam on the computer. In the spring of 2024, all students in Grade V and VIII are going to be required to take the test on the computer. There will be no paper-based option. By spring of 2025, Grades IV, V, VI, and VIII have to take it on the computer, and then ultimately, by spring of 2026, there will be no paper-based at all. All students will be required to take the assessment on the computer. Since there was a gap in time that the assessment was not being administered, it kind of interfered with our rollout plan of going to CBT and doing that progressively. So we made the decision in 2022, since it was going to be back to full-scale assessments, to just have students take it on the computer and, and move forward in that way. So that was something new, again, in that comparison between 2019 and 2022. Something that has been consistent for the last couple of years, the assessments are given over two days. Both the ELA exam and the math exam are administered over two days. The assessments are untimed, meaning that students have the ability, they have unlimited time in order to be able to take the assessments. That's something that's new because there was quite a few years where the assessment was administered over three days. And what the state did was, when they, they shifted from a three-day exam to a two-day exam, it kind of began a, a new baseline in, in terms of comparison. So that's part of the reason why we don't have, normally, when I do the Regents' presentation, I go back to, you know, six, eight years in terms of our student performance. The reason why we don't do that is because it, you can't compare the results of those three, this is according to State Ed. You can't compare the results of those three-day assessments to the two-day assessments. So we only make the comparisons based upon comparable assessments that have been administered historically. Questions so far?
I have one.
Yeah?
You said students are taking it on the computer.
Yep.
Are they familiarized with the process of taking exams on the computer prior to the exam?
So that is a work in progress for us. Right now, and this was something that we, we have later on in the presentation, right now, the state has a series of samplers that are on the State Ed website, where basically you can go onto State Ed, you can click Grade IV ELA, and it'll give you three, four sample assessments for the kids to be able to sit down and, and practice. Now, mind you, the tools and the, the, the portal that exists is a very unique portal, where there's a lot of different assessment tools that are out there. For example, our students take the STAR reading and the STAR math exam. The STAR reading and the STAR math exam appear differently when the students log in than they do when they sit down to take the state assessment. So the, the practice that we have, number one, is to use the, the samplers that the state has put out, but that's very limited. Another tool that we're in the process of rolling out is a, a software program called Datamate, which actually mirrors the NextEra portal that the students sit down and take the state assessments in. That's a work in progress. That, that's something that the more kids get exposure to that, the more familiar and comfortable they are when they actually sit down to take the exam, which is a shift for us because historically, that's not something that they do on, on a daily basis in day-to-day instruction. It's something that is, you know, going to take.
It's a shift for them as well.
That's exactly right.
And there's, there's a difference, obviously, in answering a fractions problem with a pencil and, and paper as opposed to using your, your mouse to guide the tools that are on an assessment and trying to figure out your answer that way. So that has been a shift.
Yep.
So I'm sorry, I have a follow-up. So if I get this correct, to go onto the state website is relatively at home, right? That's not in-class instruction?
No, it, it is something, it is something that, that the teachers weave into the classroom, but the, the, the resources that are online for that, the state samplers, are very limited. So now, we're in the process of expanding, again, the tool is called Datamate, and basically the, well, the company that we contract for scoring our state assessments, Educational Vista, is also the company who hosts this Datamate program. They have imported into their system all of the old state assessments historically, all of the released questions for the assessment. Teachers can build an assessment in there, taking, say, they're working on fractions in the classroom. They can do a search for fraction questions that have been on the old state assessments. They can create a test of a series of fractions questions. They can push it out to the students. When the students log in to take that, it mirrors and resembles the portal that they sit down and experience when they take the state assessments, just like it. Another example is sixth-grade students are allowed to use a standard, a standard calculator on their assessment. That's a tool that exists in the portal that they can click Calculator, and, and the calculator will appear. Seventh and eighth grade have the ability to be able to use a scientific calculator. Just the format and the structure of a calculator could vary depending upon the different type of system, so the benefit of this other tool is it gives them more resources beyond the three or four samplers that are available from the State Ed website to have that practice, and the teachers would have the ability to be able to integrate that over a more prolonged period of time based upon whatever the various topics are that they're teaching in their class. Does that make sense the way that?
Yes. And as, as you'll see a little bit later on when we talk about the plan, when we talk about common assessments, there'll be an opportunity for teachers to use, you know, common assessments that are in that format. Because at the end of the day, they feel, a lot of teachers, I want, we want our kids, you know, to, to practice with this format. We don't want the first time that they're going to see this, just for a couple of sampler questions, right? The samplers are really limited, like, as Eric said, but the old, the old state assessments that are in there, they have longer opportunities for, for practice. And you can go and put any of your questions that are standards-based in there, and then there's a button that says NextEra Format, and it creates these new opportunities for learning in the same format as, as the state test, which is something that, that we have access to.
And, and the challenge last year, and you may recall, I mentioned this in the Regents' presentation, one of the things that happened last year was we had to make some instructional decisions where the teachers, when they were preparing their kids for the Regents' exam, had to make decisions in the curriculum based upon what to cover, based upon what they anticipated was going to be on the Regents' exam, where they said, you know, I've, I've, I'm teaching this particular topic, but I've, I've never seen a question on this, on the Regents' exam. However, they knew that there was something else that was frequently tested on the Regents' exam, and they would spend more time reviewing the topics to make sure that they were preparing the kids for the exam. One of the things that, you know, we, we've been confronted with historically was not knowing how many kids were going to sit down to take the exam impacted the amount of preparation we were going to do specifically for them to sit and take the test. Last year, coming out of the pandemic, the teachers were really focused on content. And, you know, there was conversations about how much do we prepare them to take the test versus how much do we continue to make sure that we're teaching them math? Now, we're working on weaving those skills into the day-to-day instructions, so that way now, you know, you'll see, we're having more kids take the test. We're going to be weaving that into the classrooms in order to be able to make sure that the kids are prepared to be able to do that.
One more question. You made a comment earlier about, about kids answering a question on fractions. Of course, they have to answer it on the computer, but are they given pen and paper or pencil and paper to actually work out what their answer might be?
Yep.
Good. The math teacher had one.
Absolutely. But, but again, that, that's, I, I was talking to, I was talking to middle school math teachers about this, and one of the things that they shared was, that's also a skill, because one of the things that, especially during the height of the pandemic, when we were doing a lot of online learning, because extended response questions and equation building and things like that is difficult on the computer, one of the things that the teachers did was, it was easy for them to integrate through a Google Form multiple-choice questions and having them scored online. The extended response was more challenging, and in many cases, the teachers would have them write responses on paper and pencil, take a picture of it, and submit it to the teacher in order for the teacher to be able to do it. The challenge with that is, that might have been okay for them to evaluate how they're doing mathematically based upon the paper, but when you start to transfer that to taking the state assessment, where the students, when they take the state test, are not doing it on paper, taking a picture of it, and submitting it, they actually need to enter their, answer their response onto the computer, which is also a skill.
Yes.
And so part of the conversation that we're having with the teachers is, how do we make sure that these assessments are assessments of our kids' reading and ELA and math ability and not assessments on their test-taking ability? So equipping them with the skills to be able to do that is critical.
Yeah, it's a big concern.
Just a few other items. When, when the, there were a lot of conversations in the peak of the refusal movement about how the state assessments are going to be utilized. Currently, there, there's still a, a mandate in place where the school district is not allowed to attach assessments to students' permanent record. We are allowed to be able to use them, and we should be using them as part of instructional decisions for kids. However, you're not allowed to include them in a student's permanent record. The assessments, you're, you're going to hear us talk a little bit about released test questions. When the students in those two days sit down to take the exam, some of the questions are questions that are actually used for the scoring of their overall results. Some of them are field test questions to be used in future assessments. After the assessments are scored, the state releases which questions were the ones that count towards student results and which ones they hide that they use in future, on future assessments. We also still have to continue to administer standalone field tests for the critical response questions because all of the critical response questions count towards student results. The, the portal that I was talking about, the NextEra portal, is overseen by a, a company called Questar Assessments. That's the company that State Ed contracts with to develop the state assessments. So when the Educational Vista is the company that we pay to score our assessment results, came out with this portal that looked like the one from Questar, it was important for us to be able to utilize that because that is the portal that actually resembles what the State Ed portal looks like. The, the last piece is the scoring. Many years ago, when, you know, when the assessments first started, we were able to score the assessments in-house, where our, our teachers were able to sit down as a group. The challenge now is, it's a lot of lost instructional time for teachers to be out of the classroom scoring the assessments. We, we, you know, substitutes is an issue and things like that, so we made the, the decision in the district to send our assessments out to be scored, and we get those results, which has positives and negatives. The positive is, we get to maintain our instructional time, our teachers get to be in the classroom and continuing to teaching kids. The downside is that there's a lag there between the assessment results when you don't score it yourself and, you know, when, when, when our high school teachers score the Regents' exams, they get instantaneous raw results on how they're doing. You know, it, it takes us time for us to get the, the scores back in order to be able to see how they're doing. Plus, you get the raw results. The scores are also scaled by State Ed, so you get, you have to wait for State Ed to determine what is a one, two, three, four on the state assessments as well. Any questions on any of that? Awesome. So as I said, we're going to start with, going back to the, the last time that the assessment was administered fully to all of the students in the school district, which was 2019.
So I think one of the things to, to note is the participation rate at the bottom. So where you see a percentage and participation, that's the participation rate just for Monroe Woodbury. So these charts compare Monroe Woodbury's performance to New York State and the school districts that make up Orange, Ulster, Bosse's, so the, the component districts. Then, this is from 2019, so you've seen this information before at, at a previous presentation. What's different, though, I think, for, for all of you is just to note the, the participation rate. When we move on to 2022, what you'll see is an increase in participation rate across the board. What you'll see also is a continued trend that was similar to 2019. As far as determining, there were years, and I think some of you were on the board or even as parents years ago, where you'd say, oh, the state test results would come out, oh, we only had, you know, 50% of our kids take this. Can we even use this as, as an assessment that matters? Now we have almost 90% of our students in the three-through-five grades taking this. And for us, as a district, it was one of a few common assessments that we, that we gave across the district or had across the district. That's a practice that you'll hear about in just a few minutes as far as the plan, but this is how our students performed in last year's April administration of the, the ELA.
And, and just to go back to that participation item for a moment, the state participation in Grade III ELA was 84%, and we were at 86%, which means that we had more students average in Monroe Woodbury participate than in the state. Grade IV, the state participation rate was 83%. So, wait, I apologize. It was 80, yes, it was 86% for Grade III, it was 85 for Grade IV, so again, we were above the state average. Grade V was 84% in the state, we had 87, we were above the state. Grade VI, the state was 81%, we had 75, so we started to dip below the state average. Grade VII was 79% in the state, we had 73%, and Grade VIII in New York State was 74%, and we had 66%. So we're still sort of slipping off at the middle level in terms of our participation rate. And again, our hope is that we've seen an upward trend, that that trend is going to continue in order for us to really be able to use this data to be able to evaluate how our students are doing.
And I think it's important that, coming off of the pandemic, the, the last couple of years, it's really important to understand what baseline information we have about our students across the board. And that's what we use almost as a, as a springboard to planning on, you know, how to raise these and how to fix, you know, any of the issues that we have. And I'll speak in just, just a minute about some of the, the gaps that we've noticed and some of the trends that we've seen, and then what we have to implement in order to, to get these up.
And just very quickly, when I did the presentation on the Regents' exam in October, I had mentioned at that time that we didn't have the, the statewide comparison in terms of how Monroe Woodbury did. We only had our local results. These results came out on November 30th, which is why we were able to then add this into the presentation. Had we done the presentation before then, we wouldn't have been able to talk about all of this information because we wouldn't have had it.
So then the same thing, this is, this is information that you've seen at, at a previous presentation. This was the 2019 math proficiency, and again, you can see the participation rate as well as the proficient, proficiency is a score of three or four. Any student that scores a one or a two would be deemed, they, they would not be proficient, so their scores are not part of this.
And, and one, one quick item of note, just a, a reminder about Grade VIII. Grade VIII students who are taking algebra and end up taking the Algebra Regents' exam at the end of eighth grade do not sit and take the Grade VIII math assessment. So the results that you're going to see, both in this slide and the next slide, for Grade VIII, do not include the students that have sat, for example, last year, June of 2022, we had 144 students take the Algebra Regents' exam in eighth grade. Those students are not included in this slide.
So you're basically, yeah, you're lapping off the 144 Algebra I students from, from the total.
Right.
And these are the scores for, for math across the board. We'll talk about, and you approved last year as a board textbook line for Envision Math, the Envision Math program, we'll, we'll get through that. But again, from my vantage point, this is our, this is our baseline, and this is what we're using to, in terms of movement forward.
Yep. Questions?
So I just, I just want to go back to what you just said in regards to, so the chart that's on 2019 included the Regents, and the one for 2022 does not?
No.
Neither of them have it.
Neither includes the Regents' results. Yep.
And so do you have any statistics as of now as to the difference that we've had in the percentage that increased in the number of students taking the test, but if you look at the chart just at face value, the decline in the actual proficiency?
Right.
And I'm assuming we're looking into that?
Well, but, and part of what you're saying is, it, from, from what I'm hearing, this is where we need to get our participation rate up even further, so that way we can track who the kids are that are taking the exam. Because again, 42% of the students, only 42% of the students took the, took the assessment in 2019. We had 58, which was an increase, but it's hard to be able to draw exact conclusions about how the kids are doing when you're still looking at 58% of the kids not taking the exam, which is our, yeah.
No, I was, I was just going to say, I think what we're talking about is that we had an increase of students taking the Algebra Regents.
Correct.
Okay.
So that would then decline the number of students who would take this assessment.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's the difference between the two numbers. So in 2019, I think the.
But that doesn't, that doesn't include participate, that, that's not included, yes.
I'm not talking about participation, but I'm saying in 2019, how many sections of Algebra did we offer?
Right.
In 2022, how many sections of Algebra did we offer? Because that is indicative also, right? If I have more kids going into Algebra, then I'm going to have less kids taking this test. So I think that's important to note.
Correct.
Okay.
But according to what we see here, the participation rate is higher than.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
But, but remember, though, the participation rate is of eligible students who are able to sit and take the exam. So if you have a class of 550 kids, and we had 144 kids who sat and took the Algebra I Regents' exam, 58% of the remaining 40-whatever are the ones who sat and took the exam. It's not 58% of the overall eighth-grade class.
I think that information would be helpful as a point-to-point comparison.
Yep.
How many students were eligible in 19?
Yep.
How many were eligible in 2020?
Yep.
Because in looking at it, and I know you're going to cover it, the, it's concerning the level of drop.
Yep.
You know, I, I just did a quick calculation, you know, the state dropped about seven to nine, and we're 28, 25, 24, 21. So proficiency is concerning, but I, we don't know what the eligible populations were in both years to know that level.
Who sat, right. And, and I think another factor in that is, the, the state is also in a flux of, what's not included in this is, and we can only focus on our results exclusively, the effect of a lot of the other factors that are out there in terms of who's taking it on paper, who's taking it on CBT, you know, the, that's the state in its entirety, regardless of how they sat and took the exam. So for us, we simply look at the overall state results, but in the end, we look at the point, the point-to-point comparison in Monroe Woodbury exclusively, and how do we get our results to improve?
So, and based off of that statement, you think that it's possible that some of the slippage is because it was the first time in 2022 that everybody took it online?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I, I, I think it could be the result of a lot of different factors. I think that that may be one. I don't know that we can necessarily say that it's that exclusively. I, I think, and one of the things that I had talked about in the last presentation was, you know, the impact of COVID. And, and so the, the, the ELA was not impacted as much, if you remember, in the proficiency rate of our Regents' exams compared to math. So I, I think that there's a lot of comparisons, and it's really difficult to like say, this is what the thing is that we think it could be. I think when you hear what the things are that we're working on, I think we're looking at everything. I think we're looking to address a, a lot of different items.
Does that answer your questions, Stacy?
Yeah, thank you.
So one of the things that we felt was important to point out was, what do we do with information once we have it? And what I wanted to show you is, this is an example of a, of a gap analysis, and we've. And we've focused on, on two groups, economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged. So when we get our Level Two reports, which come out in August, we have a list of students and it's broken down by subgroup. It's broken down by race. It's broken down by students with disabilities or not. It's broken down by economically disadvantaged or not. It's broken down by E and L or not. When you look at the, the subgroups and the numbers of students in our subgroups, economically disadvantaged is our largest subgroup. And of all of our, our students across the three through eight landscape. So in looking at that, we said, hey, that's, that's an area that we should review and see how we've done. And what you see in the blue are, the blue columns are those who are not economically disadvantaged and how they performed in 2016, 17, 18, 19, and 22. And then the proficiency rate for, for economically disadvantaged, which you'll see is also increased through, through the years. One thing that I think is important to point out, though, is as proficiency has increased or decreased with, with that group, the gap of, the performance gap between those two groups has stayed relatively consistent for those, those five years. And so when we sit down and say, all right, we've got work to do, right? We want to, you know, make more students proficient or however you want to phrase it, but we also have to do, you know, we have to question, what have we done and how have we targeted, you know, this group of students and can we do more? And when we talk about the plan in just, in just a second, you'll see there are, there are things that will be put in place to focus on this. It's not only focusing on this group. Obviously, the, the challenge comes with, with raising everybody's proficiency rate. But with that, we want to be able to not just raise proficiency rates, but also close the gap at, at the same time, if that makes sense.
What are the qualifiers New York State uses for determining economically disadvantaged?
It's your free and reduced lunch.
That's the only thing that they look at is if they qualify for free and reduced lunch and they take it? That's, so, uh, using that as a notion, uh, the gap between 2019 to 2022 when COVID hit, um, and you did have a large number of people who were pushed out of work doing it, could that also have had an impact on the, you know, the number of, the number of people who were getting the free and reduced lunch became larger, yet we might have actually changed the gap between those two years?
I think that is, that is very possible. It, it, I think one of the things to point out is when you look at the, the, in, you know, the, the informational articles that have come out regarding learning loss in, in terms of post-COVID or post-COVID world, I think one of the things that they pointed out is that the group who's economically disadvantaged was at largest risk for, um, for learning loss, right? It's harder for, for some students to learn. They may not have the same level of access as, as other students. There might be even more challenges outside of, of school. So from a positive standpoint, right, if you're going to look at things with a, with a glasses half-full kind of lens, you can make the argument, you know what, in some cases, maybe that gap should have been even wider in 2022. But it's still, it's still 25% and it's not to where we, you know, where we want it to be.
And I think to your point, the overall number of economically disadvantaged has increased in the last few years for us.
When we were during COVID and we were getting, when everybody was getting free lunch, did we still have the same amount of free and reduced applicants or did that not affect it?
No, I, I, I think that we saw even in that time period, there was an increase. But the concern that we had was exactly what you were talking about where, because everybody was getting it, that may reduce the number of people that were actually applying for, and so this year, this year was year one of the, the Free Meal Plan not continuing. We had a pretty significant effort at the beginning of the school year of making sure that we got the word out to people to say, reminder that the, the Free Meal Plan has ended and that we need to make sure that everybody gets the, the applications in.
So I don't often do this, but I'm going to ask Aldis, please bear with me. Aldis, I just have a quick question. I need a clarifying, um, answer. In 2020 and 2021, during the pandemic, when everyone received free, when every lunch was free for everyone, did parents still have to apply to be free and reduced or did that not happen?
They did not have to apply. It was a carryover of students from the 2019.
Correct.
Year, but there were parents that did continue to apply because of those additional benefits, for example, college apps and, and exams.
So it was basically a rollover?
Correct.
So from 20, so you weren't going to see the increase because they didn't have to apply for that. So that's why it's probably this year will be significant for us because now they have to apply if they want to have free and reduced lunch. That's where you see the significant change.
And that's, and.
Thank you, Aldis.
And we do try to, you know, I think similar to what Aldis just said, I think that the main rationale is for people to be able to access free breakfast and free lunch, but there are also other benefits to that and, and encouraging people just because you may have access to a free lunch. There are still other benefits in terms of, you know, college board payment for certain tests and things like that, that there are other, other benefits that you still need to make sure that you can continue to submit your application. So.
Do these gaps exist in other areas similarly for economically disadvantaged?
They do.
Are you seeing something different here than you would see in other typical comparisons between non-economically disadvantaged and economically disadvantaged?
They, they do. They exist with, um, in, in other subgroups across the board. You know, there's a, we look at our students with disabilities and our, our students who.
About the same levels?
It, it's not necessarily the same levels, but what you'll see is the gaps, in, in some cases might be larger or might be smaller, but you'll see that the gaps have been relatively consistent from, from year to year.
So, Mr. Anderson, were you asking if the, the, the gap between socioeconomically disadvantaged students and not socioeconomically disadvantaged students, do you see that in other places? Was that your question?
Correct.
You do. You'll see that sometimes unfortunately in graduation rates.
Right.
Right? That, that's, that's significant.
And whether it was significantly different than this or not.
Right. I, I think, I think that's something that, that Dr. Hauser will probably have to go and take a look at, but it's, it is significant. When we take a look at our students who are graduating in four years and those who may take five years or in fact not graduate, that too is a major factor for us. And so when the state takes a look at your data, one of the significant data, I think that's why this present, this piece got up here, is because that's a significant data for us, for everyone across the state. It's always taking a look at your, those two groups and comparing the two.
And, and in the end, similar to what Matt said, economically disadvantaged is our largest subgroup in comparison to any of the other subgroups. So if you're talking about trying to close that achievement gap, some of the decisions related to this group will, are going to impact the widest range of kids. That's not to say that we're not focusing on the other subgroups as well, but in terms of impacting the most kids, the decisions that we're making in this area are significant. Any other questions?
All right. And so this, this slide are six bullet points that Ms. Rodriguez presented during the September 28th presentation when we talked about the district-wide goals. So just a, a reminder that things that we're doing as far as planning for ELA and math fit underneath those goals. We don't want those goals to just, you know, be presented and then all of a sudden, you know, we don't really go back to them or talk about them. So you'll know that things that we have put in place all align with, with these six bullet points.
Um, so now, now we're going to be, sort of shift to what are some of the elements that we're, and items that we're kind of taking away from this and, and what, what steps are we taking moving forward? One major focus area for us is something called Tier One Support. And basically what Tier One Support is, instructional decisions that are made on a daily basis within the classroom. Before you talk about adding a Tier Two academic intervention or a Tier Three where students might be pulled out of class for reading help or things like that. So one of the main focuses is Tier One Support. And that, and included in that is data accessibility, meaning how do we equip our staff with information to be able to help them make instructional decisions on a daily basis? And, and some of that is done through progress monitoring. We have a variety of different progress monitoring tools that we, we utilize. We, first is the state assessment data. Our teachers get access to the, the student state assessment data. We administer the benchmark star reading and star math. How do we get, that's administered three times, uh, each year. How do we get that information into our teachers' hands? We also, there have been conversations on common assessments. That's one of the, one of the, the district-wide goals. Common assessments are tools where teachers are evaluating student progress through the curriculum and making sure that not only are those classroom-level assessments, where if I'm teaching, to use the fractions, fractions example, if I'm teaching fractions within my classroom and I, I administer a fraction test that I make up myself, but then next year when the student goes in and gets into a classroom and the teacher teaches fractions, but has students from different classrooms who may have taken a different fractions test the year before, that data that the teacher got from the previous year is only as good as that teacher's classroom who created that individual test. By administering common assessments and having those results go into a common location, teachers in the subsequent year have access to that information so they can see, I'm teaching fractions, how did this student do on fractions the year before regardless of the classroom that they were in?
And it's not every test or assessment, you know, forever and ever, but it, what it does, it, there have to be certain assessments that if you're a student in North Main, you're going to be taking the same assessment as a student third, you know, if you're a third grade student at North Main, a third grade student at Pine Tree is going to be taking the same one and, and a third grade, you know, student at CV is going to be taking the same one. So that we as a district can make educated decisions about how we're performing and how our students are performing. Because this is not just about the, the, the learning piece, this is about the teaching piece. And then do our teachers have what they need in order to best serve our students? And, you know, sometimes we just have to ask them and we'll get to that when we talk about the elementary piece.
Right. To, to use middle school ELA as an example, the middle school ELA has, they administer quarterly assessments. And after they administer the quarterly assessments and the teacher scored those exams, they may say, you know, something I noticed across the board in scoring my students' assessments that they had difficulty on this particular topic. Before I move into the next unit, I'm going to spend another couple of days on this particular topic to reinforce that with, with my students. And the next step is, is continuing to make sure that our curriculum is aligned to state standards. As I said earlier, um, this year is the shift from the, the Common Core standards to the Next Gen standards and making sure that our curriculum is aligned accordingly to be able to accommodate for that shift. We're also having a lot of conversations about our academic intervention model. How do we, um, try to create a, a model where the interventionists, the teachers that provide academic intervention are able to align what they're doing within their classroom and collaborate with the classroom teachers that they're pulling from? Sometimes, you know, I, I might be a reading teacher and if I'm pulling students from three different classrooms when teachers might be doing, uh, skills a little bit differently, it makes it challenging for the teacher to be able to provide an intervention if the kids are not doing the, the exact same thing at that exact moment in time on that particular day. So looking at our model, also finding ways for our AIS staff to be able to, um, have time and plan with the classroom teachers. So that way, the, the work that the students are doing in, in an AIS class mirrors and is aligned to the, the work that's happening within the classroom.
Because I think what's ultimately happening is everybody's working really, really hard. So you can have a classroom teacher who's, who's working incredibly hard, giving his or her best effort, and then the student goes to, you know, reading or math support and that teacher is also working, you know, as hard as they can. Or the E and L teachers are working as hard as they can. One of the things that in asking, asking teachers and speaking with them is it's been really challenging to find time for those groups to sit down and share information. So one of the things that we're looking at is what information do we even have on those students, right? What do we know about those kids? How do we monitor, you know, the, the progress that, that they are making? And then how is that information shared? And idea, in, in an ideal world, you know, we'd all love to have, you know, conversation time every week, but that doesn't necessarily always happen because the, the day-to-day experiences for, for teachers are really busy. But if we can create, you know, these profiles of a learner for every single student, so if, if, you know, Ms. Donahue is a student and, you know, Ms. Mr. Reynolds is, you know, are two different students and they have, you know, different support services, if I'm a general ed teacher and I have both of them in my class, I might not be able to walk down the hall and talk to the, the reading specialist or the math specialist, but I would like some, you know, real-time information. What is that information? What are the tools that, that they're using? Those are things that we are working on really, you know, shoring up.
And, and finally, a, a third area of focus for us is continuing to look at our student support programs that are beyond the, the school day, um, after-school programs, the summer programs that we offer. How do those programs, um, provide support to our kids? How do we make sure that students have the most access to those programs? And, and, you know, making sure that they are doing what we are intending for them to be able to do.
So we've had a number of professional development days or, or half-days and full days. October 31st and December 7th were half-day, district-wide half-days. November 8th was a district-wide full day. And one of the things that we did at the elementary level, um, on October 31st, some, some teachers were still in costume, which was hysterical, is we held district-wide grade level meetings. So every single kindergarten teacher in the district sat in a room together. Every single third-grade teacher in the district sat in a room together. And that's really hard because I think one of the things that often happens, and it was ma, was made even more challenging during COVID, was you have, you know, again, I was talking about everybody who's working really hard, but sometimes you have these, you end up having these silos. And you have, you know, how do we ensure that what's happening at North Main and is happening at the, you know, CV and is happening at, at Pine Tree from a curricular standpoint? Every, every school's going to have their own cultures and, and, you know, you don't want to walk in and make every single thing exactly the same, but there have to be some type of curricular, um, guidelines that are consistent from, from building to building. And that's, you know, what we started to, to work on in October. Again, in line with that are the common assessments in math. We have a brand-new math program that we started that was chosen last year. We began implementation in September. It's, it's, and it's, it's not, it's, it's not in beta phase, but we're still at the very start of it because teachers, unless you piloted the program, you're seeing this for the very first time. So we've had grade-level professional development, development opportunities by school. That, that's been really important to, to, to have. So that's the Envision Math piece that you see up there. Pacing guides come with the program. Accessing them is, has been important and those trainers have showed our teachers, you know, where to, where to find them so that you can make sure that, again, a fourth-grade teacher should be relatively at the same, you know, area in terms of instruction as another fourth-grade teacher. So that one teacher isn't, you know, five weeks ahead. There are some buffer days, so you may get ahead or you may say, you know, my students need an extra day of instruction with this. So there are some buffer days built in and that's, that's important. But to be relatively near the same, um, same spot in the, in the curriculum is important. And one of the things that we did this year is, or we started to do, is asking the teachers, what do they think? And, um, I started, I started that with reading, which is a heavy-duty topic and, you know, and basically sent out a survey to all the teachers saying, what do you think about, you know, do you have enough time to, to meet with the classroom teachers? Do classroom teachers and, and AIS teachers have enough time to meet? Do classroom teachers and E and L have enough time to meet? To talk about student progress. Do you feel that, um, the, the current reading program is, is what's best for kids or, or not? Do we need to, to change something? And what it ultimately did is it, I feel it gave teachers a voice to say, you know what, this is working for me or this isn't working for me. And if we have a large percentage of teachers saying, you know, we got to try something different because I'm, I'm, I'm swimming without a, without a life vest here in some deep water, then we have to look at an action plan to make sure that they don't feel like that. Because there, there's the feeling piece and then there are the facts piece. So, you know, what can data provide? What can data show us, which is, which is super important. But asking those teachers what they think about these programs is also important. And that's something that we're, we've started and that we're going to continue to implement. As far as the winter, what's coming up, we've already started, report cards and, um, so we're looking at the elementary report card as a whole. And what the report cards do is, they are standards-based, but in some areas, they need a little more detail that can show a parent and a teacher what's expected of a student by the end of the school year. So if, if I'm a, if I have a, a third-grade student and I've come in, I say, what's my,[1702.53] So if, if I'm a, if I have a, a third-grade student and I've come in, I say, what's my, what's my child supposed to know by the end of the school year? It might be kind of sort of challenging to answer that question. And we're looking to take that guesswork out of, out of the mix. So what we have is we have a report card committee that's begun to meet. And what we're going to be doing is we're going to be looking at the expectations that we have for every single grade level. In addition to revamping and revising the report card, we are going to be implementing a rubric that goes along with it. So it should take the guesswork out of it for teachers and parents. And what I mean by that is if I've got a fourth-grade student and we are looking at a particular standard in reading, and your, your child gets a, gets a three, great. What does that mean? Well, it means that there needs to be a rubric that explains to you why they got a three. And right now, we don't have that. And that's something that we're looking to, to implement as well. And that will all ultimately, the, the goal of that is to roll that out for the 23, 24 school year. The progress monitoring tools that, that Eric had spoken about, we need to determine, which we have a lot. We have a lot of different options available. We've had pilots done, and we've got access to this and that. We're looking to streamline it and make it so that our, our teachers know what they can use and then what's expected of them to use, because those are not one in the same. And that's what we're looking to do. And then targeted after-school instructional opportunities, there are, we already have some programs in place, and we're looking to expand that by determining which students, you know, we need to, to target for that.
I have a question about this survey.
Sure.
So what were the results?
So the results are, if I can, basically, the, the questions were, do, do you have enough time to confer with, as a classroom teacher, do you have enough time to confer with your reading teachers? And the majority said, no, we don't have enough time. Do you have enough time to confer with the E and L teachers about student progress? And the former majority said, no. The next one, the next question was, do you feel, it's not even do you feel, I didn't, I took out, I started with do you feel and do you think, and I got rid of those, those statements. It talks about, do you have shared routines? Do you have access to the standards? Do you discuss data? But then when I talked about, you know, we gave strongly disagree, disagree, partly agree, agree, strongly agree. And when we got into the current reading program as it, we presently have it, the questions were, do you feel like this is the best program? Is this the right reading curriculum right now for students who don't need any extra support? So students who are not receiving AIS or students who are not E and L services or students who are not designated as students with disabilities? And, you know, over 50% said they either disagreed or strongly disagreed that this is the right program for, for the kids who don't need extra support. The numbers jumped up, to be very honest, when we focused on those students who needed support. So when you look at our students, you know, you ask our teachers who are boots on the ground, is this the right program for students who are receiving AIS reading support? The number jumped up to, if it was they strongly disagreed or disagreed, you're looking at 69% of our teachers said, oh, I'm sorry, 69% of our, 69% of our teachers said this wasn't, you know, they didn't feel it was the right one.
So are students who need the most help, teachers feel more like the program is failing?
They feel like we may have to review the program.
More than half of students who don't need extra help, it's the teachers, the first-line defense teachers feel like the program is failing. And then, again, for students who have, need extra support, now we're up to 70%, 69% of that.
Yeah, and, and students with disabilities and E and L students were even higher. So when you look at our students who are in the E and L, is this, is this the right approach to our students who receive E and L services? It was, you know, over 80% of our teachers felt that.
Is that the same for the math program?
I haven't done the math program yet because we just started it. So I, I don't, I want to give them more than five months to say, hey, what do you think about the math program? So reading, we've, it's been, you know, ongoing now for a couple of years, and...
I was going to ask, that was my next question. How long is the reading program, the current one, that we've had?
Probably six, eight, probably eight years, I would say. Well, no, actually, that's, teachers, the, the writing program is the one that's been in place. Probably the reading is probably six years, I would say.
So, so do we think that the, the failures, assuming that the teachers are correct, which I am, that the reading program has caused the change in the test scores for ELA where we went from above-average in testing to below-average in testing? Is that because of the, I mean, I know there's multiple factors, but do we think that the program is the main contributor to that? Or do we not know?
I, I don't, I don't know yet because I haven't really seen other programs. Do I think it can be a contributor? Yeah, I do. I think it's something that we need to review. So what we have is, and the building principals have sent it, you know, what's the reading, what's, what's the group of people that's going to start to look at, you know, possible alternatives? And, you know, that's important to do. What else is out there? What do we do as far as our foundational skills? And I think that's one of the points of feedback that we've got, that we got most from our teachers, was feeling like there's a lack of foundational skills, even in our upper elementary students. And why is that? Well, maybe because they felt like there's a lack of foundational skills, and I'm talking like phonics, phonemic awareness type of things, at the K-2 level. So what do we have to put in at the K-2 level that, that makes sense? Yeah, there's work to be done.
What was the teacher feedback from the day that they met district-wide? Was there feedback that there were large discrepancies amongst the buildings district-wide on who was where in the curriculum or what may be being taught, what might not be being taught? Were we pretty baseline?
So, so when we met as a, the goal of October 31st was to talk about math and to say, hey, look, everybody, you know, this is the first time you've all been in the same room in years, we're going to talk about common assessments in math. And we think that's important to say, because understandably, if you have a group of students in your class, you may say, you know what, I've got 22 kids or 21 kids or 24 kids, whatever the number, I know them best, and I know that this particular math test, you know what, might be challenging. So I'm going to have a, an assessment that has 15 questions, and of the 15 questions, I might, you know, lop off three of them and only give 12 of them. And another teacher next door, right, might give all 15. And then the third teacher might read the test to them because they want their kids to succeed and they really want to try to understand. And that's what we talked about, the importance of having these assessments that are, are administered similarly. So that was, that was the October 31st. What there, what happened on, when I met with all the teachers on, I think I met with the, the two fives on November 8th, and I think I met with the December, with the K-1s on December 7th, I think that's how I, and what I did is I said, I was very honest, I said, I'm going to present this, and I, I was virtual, so I was, it was all at the same time. And then you're going to sit with your, your administrators in your building, and you're really going to sit down and dissect this. And I think that's where the really important conversations took place. I had already sat down with the principals beforehand and said, hey, here's what your data looks like. We had gone through all that. But I wasn't hiding from, you know, the, three slides ago, you saw some things that I think we were all kind of, whoa. I wasn't hiding that from, from the teachers, but I also wasn't making my meeting with them or my presentation to them all about that. Because, to be quite honest, that's a piece of it, but that's not all of it by any means. There are a lot of things that we've already begun to discuss, already begun to implement at the, at the, you know, across the board in both, both areas. And I, I think that's one of the biggest reasons why this position, the one that I'm sitting in, we even have at this point, because I think there was a recognition that we, there's a lot to, to get done, and...
And I think the piece about the, about the reading is similar to, is, is sort of the evolution of the conversation about math. The reason why the math program was being reviewed was our previous program was sort of coming to the end of its usefulness for the school district. And that's what happened with, when that program was selected, we did everyday math before it. And then you have a district-wide team that sits down, and then that's, I think, the process that Matt's embarking on right now with the reading, where getting a team of teachers together to be able to review the options that are out there. And, you know, similar to the presentation that I made to the board last year about the process of selecting envisioned math, I think is the same as on the reading side, too.
So these are the questions I would, I would want to know, piggybacking on your survey, and, and contributing to what Jeff said. How long have these teachers been unhappy with the program, feeling that it's ineffective? And if it's progressively become less effective over the years? And if it's been a while, maybe it's a question of how we are selecting the program, the methodology that we're using, the group that we're choosing, the makeup of it, how we go about it. Maybe that might also be something to look into, to, to see that we are actually choosing the right program for our teachers, because they are the ones who know best. You know, I know you can't involve every teacher in, in selection, but maybe how we go about it might be reevaluated.
And, and look, there's also, there are different ways to, to choose a new program, particularly with something of a magnitude like reading, right? Reading is a gigantic, that's, that's a big thing, right? Because everything, it's the foundation of everything. And when you, and people feel very passionate about reading. It is reading instruction. And you, like, you all are, you know, I'm sure have seen articles or read things about, you know, some changes that have taken place in, in reading, you know, programs across, across the country. But we have, you know, there, there are different ways. We can go about it and say, hey, you know what, we're going to pilot some programs, or we're going to take the next year, year and a half and kind of, you're going to, you know, you're going to pilot one program, and you're going to pilot another one, and we're going to take our time. And that's certainly one way, way to do it. Another way to do it is, we're going to get a group together, and we're going to go and we're going to see these, you know, multiple programs in action. And sometimes we may have to say, you know what, we're going to make a decision. And we're going to, we're going to start to implement some things, and we're going to move ahead. But I think that's important to certainly understand how we got there and, you know, who, who picks a program and, and the things like that. That's where we are right now.
Can I just add to that? I think one of the things that are going to be really paramount when you select anything moving forward is that you include general ed teachers, you include special ed teachers, and you include teachers that work in AIS. If you don't include all those three components, and I'm not saying that we haven't done that, but to ensure that you have this commonality, that everybody says, this works for this group of students, this will work, this won't work for this group of students. And if we're going to invest in a program, we need to make sure that we're investing in a program that is, that has the flexibility to support students at all levels. Because not just your general ed students, we have special ed students, and we have students that have AIS. And so that's a, that's a learning thing, Mr. Israti, and I think that that's going to be really important, that anything that we choose moving forward will include the three, those three components.
Right. Is, is there anything being done to mitigate how the teachers feel about this program? I mean, feel is the wrong word, in the, in the current time, because evaluating a program and looking for it, you know, taking your time sounds great, but in the same vein, you're wasting time with these, with these students that they desperately need.
So, so one of the things that we, we have something called a joint committee, and that is when we meet with a group of teachers. I actually have potentially scheduled a meeting with a joint committee. That's all teachers, you know, a variety of teachers. And one of the things that we want to do is want to sit at the table with them and talk about, what do they think are ways for us to mitigate that? Oftentimes administrators and leaders like to say, I know what to do. And the truth of the matter is, is that we need to bring them to the table and talk about what they think we need to do. So I think that's the first step, and I think in, in doing the survey, it's really important to find out the data, what, what are they saying? And now it's having, inviting them to the table and talking about, what do you think are the ways that we can sort of, we, not sort of, ways that we can mitigate what's happened? What can we do short-term and what can we do long-term?
Yeah, and what I don't want to happen, though, is, we know how teachers feel, right? And the answer can't just be, hey, look, you're going to, you're going to keep doing this forever and ever, and we're just going to kind of, you know, not really help, but we're going to look at something. And I think that's kind of what you're saying. Oh, we'll go look at something, and we'll get there eventually, but what do we do in the meantime? And so we've already begun, we've looked into...
Can I say one more thing?
Yep, you can say 10 things.
The other job of this board is that when your CNI people get up to speak and talk about programs, I hope that you will ask them those questions when they present any program. I, I would like you to remember this, so that when they are presenting a new program, you can ask these questions, because we certainly are going to be prepared for that, but I would like you to remind everyone that these are the things that matter, because this is why this, this presentation is, is important and critical, because there's some aha moments for us. And it's important for you as well to remind us of this aha moment.
And I'll give you two examples of things that, I'm sorry, you wanted to say something, Mr....
Oh, I just, I, I'm curious, are we talking about the Lucy Corkins reading?
That's what we currently, that's what we currently use.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So what is the projected timeline based off of these committees and groups that are meeting that we have, to Dan's point, rather than continuing with this program? Do we have an end date in sight, that we have a goal that we're going to choose a new program by?
So I'm going to be, that committee is, is being formed right now. The principals all have their information, and they're putting it in by who teaches what. So literally, what was, what was just said, you have, you know, when they, when they put that committee together, they ask for people to be on the committee, its name, its school, its, are they K through 2, are they 3 through 5, are they, do they cover students with disabilities, do they cover AIS, do they cover E and L? To make sure that everything is, are they administrator, you know, to make sure that every box is checked and, and everything is covered. That's important. As far as when are we going to have it, I would, it, like I said, reading is massive, and we are going to work really hard to get into those other districts to see what they have and what they can offer.
So you're avoiding the question.
No, 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 no.
Good job.
That's 100% what you're doing.
That is, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive, though.
And I say that it should be, making it up, it's the middle of January. I would say that by January 30th, all the principals are going to have their list of 20 teachers.
Although I have that, I have that today. Oh, yeah, oh, no, that's what you're saying. Oh, yeah, no, no, that I have. No, and we'll...
There should be like a sequential timeline here, like, I don't, you're just like...
Yeah, and, no, and I agree with that. So they, we have the committee, the committee, I haven't even told the people who are on the committee yet because I, it's like hot off the press. So I, I have that, I can pull it up and say, oh, here are all the people that requested. So now what happens, it's January 11th. So now what happens is I reach out to all the other districts and say, all right, who's doing these types of programs that are different than what we're doing? Because some districts are further along in this process, and others, you know, are not. So who's doing what? And what are the, you know, what are the programs that are out there? There are different, you know, tools that we can use to look at programs that might be more successful. There are states, to be very honest, that, you know, are saying, you can only, you know, select one of these six programs because it's based on the science of reading. And those are the, that, that's a starting point for us. So who in the area uses them? You know, there's a great one in like, you know, San Diego, California, that, you know, I'm going to go see. No, I'm just kidding.
There's one in Hawaii.
Thank, thank you. I was going to say Hawaii, but, I was going to say Hawaii, but I thought that would have been a little too much. No, um, so there are, there are programs, both in New Jersey, or there are programs in New Jersey, Connecticut, New York, that we will end up making the, the trek to.
So I have a question.
Sure.
We're sitting here a year from now, and, you know, the timelines and what's been implemented and what's not, because tools are tools, right? Tools can be blamed for things, tools can help things, it's sometimes how they're used. And this reading program has probably outlived its useful life, it appears. So what does success look like next year when we're sitting here, when we see the updates from the 2023 assessment? Because something I don't see in here, and I know sometimes people get nervous, is where on the trajectory did the scores go? What's the expectation of administration to see a rise in the scores and work towards that? Because obviously, it will take a while to assess new tools, but what can be done to move the scores up a certain percentage point, to bring them at least back to what they were closer to 2019? I'm not saying exactly.
Yeah, sure.
People get nervous when they're like, well, we don't know numbers, well...
No, no, and I think that's a very valid question. If I was sitting in your seat, I would ask the same, I'm sorry.
I'd like to piggyback on that quickly.
Sure.
So if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, all the assessments are going to go to a more reading-based, even the math ones.
Yes.
So if we have a reading problem with our reading thing, now not only is it going to affect ELA, but it's going to affect math, because the kids are not going to have the reading foundation to understand the math question, whereas before it was a fraction and it was simplified, now it's, that's written out, and the kid has no idea what they're doing. You know, so that's, I just wanted to piggyback, because that's part, I think, of your answer.
So I, I think, I hesitate, I hesitate to say, look, and I'm not evading it, but I am, I do think that there, to say, hey, look, here's the exact percentage increase that we would like to see, I, I don't know the answer to that, to be very honest. But what I'd like to see are things implemented that will lend itself to more consistency, better communication. I think that, you know, one of the issues that, or one of the, to address what Dan had asked a few minutes ago, what are we doing, what are we going to be doing in the meantime? So we had a meeting, you know, we met with, we, everyone knows on the board and in the public that we use something called star, the star benchmark assessment, right? Three times a year, a student comes in, K through, through ninth grade, and they take the STAR assessment as, as a benchmark. So it, it, we see how they're performing. One of the things that we're, we're offering the, the teachers beginning this month is the opportunity to have a more, to be able to use a progress monitoring tool that is based on two things. At the earlier grades, it's based on skills. So here are the skills that, you know, uh, first graders, you know, we want them to excel at, or we want them to meet. When a student takes that really short, you know, assessment, you know, on their iPad or on their Chromebook or whatever tool they're using, it will give instantaneous information to a teacher to say, yep, here's, here's Mr. Israti, right? Here's exactly how he performed when it comes to all these skills. And you know what, I can see that in this skill area, he's doing really, really well. Great job, Mr. Israti. But in this, you know, in this area, he, there might be a deficit. And it, it's, and it's red, it's clear as day. But one of the things that this particular tool does is when you click on the red bar, it shows you an immediate intervention strategy that the teachers have been asking for. And I think that's ultimately what I've heard from the teachers. They're looking for real-time intervention strategies to help move their kids. And, and ultimately, that's just one piece of it. So how do I measure success? Do I want to see a numerical increase? Sure, but I also want to see, I want to see that gap closed, because I think that's really important.
But what, what would indicate that we celebrate there was a significant achievement? There has to be, you, you, you don't need to answer it now.
Sure.
But there has to be something.
That we can party over.
You know, you think about, let's get a man on the moon was a major goal. Like, okay, what does the goal look like that we strive for so that everybody knows what they're driving towards? Because if they don't have that, then you don't know what you're shooting for, except, you know, the, the piecemeal pieces of what you think are the problems. But what's the goal to move? Because it's really impacting the students, right? The students aren't achieving the level that they need to, to be proficient. And I know everyone cares to get that where it needs to be. So it's, okay, how, I'm just, it could be a number, it could be a number and some other variables, but I think that that's needed so that everyone knows what they're shooting for.
Yeah, and I think one of the import, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It sounds to me like Michael's asking for SMART goals, which are measurable and timed. My only question to Michael is, I mean, we can implement a new program now, but you're not gonna see the results now. You're not gonna see them next year, you're gonna see, it's gonna take time.
It's not the program, it's, we know that there are gaps, they've been identified, they've been put out in front of us. There are mitigating things that can be done internally without a new program, because obviously the students were here, they dropped to here with the current reading program. Yes, it's probably not meeting the needs. So what's the differential that we can move people to get back up? So, as I said earlier, it's gonna take a while for that program to be assessed and implemented. And to go with Mr. Israti's comments, students are gonna suffer if we don't do things. And I know that's not the intention. So it's how do we measure success? If we're all sitting here next year and the numbers come in the same, or they come in two points higher, what, what does that look like? I don't have the answer, but I think it's something that needs to be looked at, because we also serve the community.
Sure.
The parents have a right to say, okay, what enhancements were made? How are the students performing? And the expectation should be obviously up.
Yeah, and I think.
So what that goal looks like and what you measure, I think, needs a bit of oversight.
No, absolutely, and I think one of the, the first really important steps was being honest with where we are. And explaining that to the teachers and, and the administrators and the community, that's what we're doing here. And, you know, Mr. Reynolds, I hadn't even shared that with, I haven't, I didn't even share all the reading results. It's so funny, because I met with some teachers and I said, you'll get it, but let me, let me talk to the board first, because I didn't want you all to be like, oh, my gosh, what's going on? So the teachers will then get access to the results and how, you know, and what they thought. But I don't, and I don't know if it's solely a reading program issue. I think the reading program may certainly be part of it. But there are other factors, and I, and I'm not looking to be like an excuse maker either. I, I'm not, I don't want to sit here and say, oh, [inaudible] and computer-based testing. Those all can be factors and certainly could contribute to, you know, I mean, if you look at the, the trend of the scores across the state, they're all lower, you know, this, this past year. Understandably. But I know what our expectations are for this district, and, you know, that's what we want. You know, we understand where we want to be and where we want to move towards. And that's what we're doing by putting, you know, all these things into place.
Well, when you put a line in the sand, people know what to shoot for. So that's, that's really what that is.
Yeah.
The definition of success.
I think all of us have to talk about this more and agree, because we do need a goal. And I, I understand that maybe, like you said, number is not gonna be the only part of it, but I think it definitely has to be a part of it. And if we don't hit it, we don't hit it, and we could talk about why and evaluate it and investigate it and determine what to do at that point. But I do think, you know, the, like the football coach said, you are what you are. At a certain point, we are lower in reading, we need to get higher in reading. We need to set some goals that say the numbers are higher in reading and try to achieve them.
And, and I think there's another piece that we, we really should talk as a community is that we would like everyone to take the test. We'd like a hundred percent participation, because some people don't feel like there's a value to this, but there is a value to this. It's, it's, it's an important, you know, it's, it's, it's a moment in time for these kids, but it's also significant for us as a school district. So it's really important when parents, I know there was a, you talked about when there was an opt-out movement. But it's important for us to have data to be able to make good decisions. So when you have a group of students in eighth grade that only, you know, fifty-five or sixty percent of these kids or, the students are taking it, and forty percent are not, that is a little bit of a disadvantage for us. So part of what I, we want to say tonight is that this is an important test. It's not the deciding test, but it is an important test in our district, in our, in our community. And I would like to see more parents have their children take the test, because it's important, but also because as our students move on into high school, reading is not a, is not a choice. So if you are not taking these exams now and you get to high school and you have to take what we call a high-stakes test, then you're at a disadvantage, just like you shared when we had our kids take the test on the computer, but they hadn't really been exposed to doing that. So those are really important things for us to, to do and for the community to support us on, is to have our students take these tests.
And, and I think to follow up on that, I, I think for me, the, it's important to make sure that, similar to what I was saying earlier, that we're able to use these tests as a reliable source of data in terms of our student performance and, and to make annual comparisons. This is the first time in, I think, 2015, 2016 was the last time that we were even able to have this type of discussion, because the results were so skewed because of the refusal movement. It was very hard to come to any sort of generalized conclusions. So I think that we're moving in a direction where we can even begin to have this dialogue of, how do we eliminate these various factors and make sure that the ELA assessment is an assessment of how our kids are doing? Where our teachers feel like the programs that we have in place are supporting our students' instruction and that when our, our students sit down and take the exam, it is an evaluation of how well they're doing, and it's not the result of other various factors. And I think that that's part of what we collaboratively are working on, is trying to kind of eliminate a, a lot of the other factors that it could be this, it could be this, it could be this. How do we eliminate those and get more kids to take the exam? So that way we can look at the tests on an annual basis. First from an individual student, how did Eric Hassler do last year? How did Eric Hassler do this year? And know from year to year that, you know, it's not, Eric Hassler took the test on paper last time and he took it on the computer this time. How do we get the assessment to a place where we feel confident that the results that we're talking about and presenting are the results of our student performance?
And if we're appropriately and adequately creating these, these profiles of, of individual learners, the state test really shouldn't be a, a surprise, right? We should have an idea of how our students are, we need to have an idea. That's probably the better way to phrase it. We need to have a better idea of how our students are doing day in and day out, not just on this one, two-day assessment in April, in ELA or math. We need to know, I, I need to know as a district leader, our building principals need to know, our teachers need to know how their students are doing. And, and you can talk to teachers, and again, it, our professionals are just that. They are incredibly professional and they're working hard. And it's not even all just about, hey, the tools, but a lot of it is about the, the outlook and the guidance that, you know, they need to have all, all together and bringing all those pieces in. And, you know, and it's not just sit down face-to-face time with service providers, that's certainly important, but it's understanding what we're asking of our, our students. How are we saying, hey, here's what you're doing, here's what you're not doing? And so.
Well, do the STAR scores mirror the state ELA and math scores in terms of proficiency? Where's the, where's the difference?
Oh, wait, you mean in terms, I thought you meant in terms of like score to score.
No, no, I mean, it's so, so Elsie referred to it as a high-stakes test. I, I don't agree.
I'm talking about the regions.
The regions are.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
But the, the ELA and the math.
The ones, these three-through-eight test?
Yeah, there, there's zero state.
No, I said that it's, it's getting them prepared.
No, understandable, to be able to sit there to tolerate a, a three-hour exam, to be able to, to, to process the questions, to sit through it. But, you know, the, the, this is the state putting it on, on us, but without any real repercussions for the student. I mean, there's no incentive for the student to perform higher on it, all right? It's not a question if they do well, they pass, if they don't do well, they get held back. The, the score is essentially meaningless to the student. It's effective for us, and we use it as a tool for our, our, our planning and moving forward. While the STAR exam is, is more of a benchmark exam that's given throughout the year, and I want to know how they compare. Are they, are they similar? Are the, are the students performing at the same level in terms of proficiency on the ELA exams as the STAR exams? Or is it, there a discrepancy?
I think we can compile all that information for you and get it to you.
That is a good question.
Well, I also think, I, I don't know, but you can't really opt out of the STAR exam, correct? I mean, there's not really like that whole, I'm just not gonna show up.
And, and the issue is that, and, and that's, that's, I think, part of the challenge that has evolved with the state assessment with regards to the refusal. Um, you know, technically, kids, the refusal, the way that it was originally intended was the student who comes in and says, just under no circumstances am I going to take this exam. And then it evolved into an opt-out movement, which it's really not supposed to be an opt-out movement. It's not, that's the reason why the first bullet on the slide one was, all students are expected to take this exam. It's, it's, it's not supposed to be an optional exam, but it evolved into that, you know, over, over the years.
And I think it's the, you know, the, the, the secret sauce, right? Is finding that balance of knowing how your students are doing and not only assessing them, right? We don't ever want to get into the point where, oh, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Here's your assessment, you're assessing, you know, you can't do that. But we do need to know, we need to know how our kids are performing now. And then, you know, which will adequately, hopefully.
Does the economic gap go into who takes the test?
Say that again?
Does the economic gap go into who takes the test? So basically, that doesn't matter. So we're not asking.
Not for the STAR.
Yeah.
Regardless of the economic status, generally speaking.
No, I, I meant this one. So if.
No.
If I'm a low-income, am I taking the test more than kids with higher income, you know?
You mean, are they refusing?
Yeah, are they refusing more?
I understand that, yeah.
I, I, and I think that that's.
We want the kids to take the test.
Correct.
So who, who are we marketing that to?
Who's taking the test?
Right.
So we don't necessarily have the data of who's taking the test, who's not taking the test.
Right. So we can't market to those kids, to those parents.
We can't say, well, when you look at the economically disadvantaged, those are the students who are primarily taking the test versus the kids who are not economically disadvantaged, who are opting out.
You could though.
That's a possibility, yes.
You have the ability to.
Yes.
Data.
I mean.
Yes.
It's gonna fall on your shoulders.
Well, but, but the, the issue though is, from a technical perspective, when, when the assessment results go up to state ed and they send us the results, it's not individ, you don't get the individual results of who's economically disadvantaged and how they perform, because that's, that's, that's private information. You only get the overall result. And I think what, what Elsie's saying is that we don't get, we get a report of what our refusals are, but it's not necessarily aggregated in such a way for us to be able to figure that out.
Do you know who took the test, when it goes out?
We do, yes.
Right.
You have that data.
So, yeah.
Right, right.
And within house, you know who is economically disadvantaged. So, I mean, I get that the state doesn't have necessarily all that broken down, but we would have access to that information.
I'm just trying to figure out the numbers.
I think so.
To get it, yeah.
Backing. Because if we're having kids who are opting out, who perform well on the test.
I'm sorry.
Right, but they're opting out, then that can skew our numbers and our numbers aren't actually accurate. Or it could be vice versa.
Well, and, and that's one, and I think that that's, in past presentations, that's one of the things that I've talked about, is that the challenge with the refusal opt-out movement is, it doesn't, it, it doesn't necessarily leave you with the sampling for you to be able to say, I can take this smaller group who took the test and generalize it to the entire population, because it's, it's not, uh, and, and even distribution of all of the different sub-populations within the school district.
I would assume the math test for eighth graders, the kids who opted out, are in Algebra I. So I'm making this.
No, they didn't opt out, they weren't.
Well, they, they didn't have to take the exam. I'm assuming that those kids, that population of one hundred and forty-four, I think you said, would probably do well on this test. So a higher performers aren't taking it.
Well, that was my whole point to see that. You need to look at the number of kids who are not taking it, who actually took algebra, because those would have been students primarily that would have gotten a four.
That's why it goes back to.
So that hundred and forty-four students cases from twenty-three percent, if they took it, not saying they should, but if they took it, to, you know, fifty-nine percent.
Correct.
And now we're above the state level. Right, because they're better at math, right, so.
And, and again, that, that's kind of what I was saying before, that I think the goal of this partially is to make sure that we eliminate some of the other factors in this, to be able to sit and talk about the assessment results as an indication of what we want them to be.
And we've talked about the, you know, at the cabinet level, the importance of creating systems. And with proper systems that are put in place, I, I think it'll be easier also to define that, that success, because it's, it may, a number might be included. It certainly won't be only about a number. But I think that if we have things in place that where we, how our kids are performing across the board shouldn't be a surprise. We should be able to know. And if I'm the superintendent of schools and I want to know how student A in, you know, this particular grade in this particular school is doing, you should have access to that, and you should be able to understand how that is. And how do we make sure that we're all on the same page? And, um.
And I think that that goes back to.
Man, you still have to talk about the middle school.
Yeah, well, and that, and that's what, and that's what I think, and that's what I think that Mr. Israti was speaking about earlier, is that the goal being, when we accomplish what I'm saying, you would hope that the, the progress monitoring assessments that you use along the way can serve as an indicator in terms of where your kids are performing on the state assessment. That if you're, if you're properly assessing kids along the way, you should know in anticipation that our STAR results and the common, uh, common assessment results and other progress monitoring tools align with how the kids are performing on the state assessment, ultimately. I think that's.
Do the teachers have, I, I know you get aggregate results, but would I know my class is doing worse on fractions than your classes?
From a, from a day-to-day, like a, not, no, not, we don't have that right now. We're moving towards that, right?
Yeah, because that's what we need.
Well, not just that, I want to say if you're doing something.
Am I doing something wrong with the way I'm presenting the fractions?
Or are you doing something really well? And, you know, what are you doing that's really working?
And maybe I can share it with my colleagues.
And that's, and that's part of, early on when I was talking about the scoring, that's sort of what we vacillate back and forth with regards to the individual scoring, is that to have your teacher having that raw data specifically about how they perform, similar to the region's exam, when I score, you know, when I get my region's results or I see how my kids did, I know directly how, how that affected.
Yeah, but it would also be very nice, and I've always said this as a teacher, I want to know how they did on question thirty-four.
Right. Well, that's, we're having, we're having that conversation right now about getting that information.
Yes.
Yes, because we, we get it, we get it globally, where third grade, and it's similar to the, the presentation when I talked about this for the region's exam. We get the how third grade did, and, and we can get it by building at the elementary level, how third grade did on question twenty-seven on, on that.
Uh, you can get it by class, you can get it by class. You can break it down by teacher. Um, the problem is, we get that information in August, and those kids aren't even in that classroom anymore. So now they're in a, the different teacher. So now we need to aggregate that data and say, oh.
Correct.
Just so you know, teach, you're getting all these other kids who struggled with that.
Who struggled with that.
But again, if we had things in place, when we have things in place that are more consistent, I, I know, I know, this, this is the opposite of evading. Now I'm just like, come on, let's, let's, you know, when we have all those in place, we'll be able to better know everything that you're kind of doing.
Joe needs help with fractions.
And that's not about creating like an assessment.
Yeah, 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 teacher, don't use that.
And I also, it's not about creating like an assessment-driven culture by any means either. It's just about understanding how our students are performing so that we can get them what they need. And if that's a tool that a, a teacher needs, then we need to look into getting that. If that's support within the classroom, because we want to, you know, raise the level of, of performance for all of our students, then that's something that we need to look into. That's our job, ultimately, as the curriculum people, right? Our job is to support the people who are at the building levels in terms of the administration and the leadership there and in the classrooms. That's our job. And, but I, it's been important to have that baseline understanding of where our students are performing, so now we can start to analyze what it is that they need so that we can get them what they need. All right, I'm done, you can, yeah, our report cards will be finalized in.
So, um, I, I have, I have a, a little bit of a, a, a different ability in terms of meeting with the staff, because, you know, for, for Matt to get the, the whole third grade team together across the entire school district, it's a lot. Versus when I'm working with the ELA department and the math department, they meet on a regular basis. You know, October thirty-first, November eighth, December seventh conference days, the ELA department and the math department are meeting together. are meeting together, um, so, so the work is, is a, a little bit more streamlined when you start talking about those. For us, the, the ELA department has the common assessments in place, and the math department has, the ELA department has their common assessments are quarterly, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the math department has them based upon topic or unit, where basically they have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, a series of assessments that the kids take throughout the school year, um, and, and the, the assessments are, are common a, a, across grade levels. Right now, the assessments are predominantly administered in a tool called Formative, um, some of the, some of the math grades are, are still getting the assessments in there, but, um, Formative is an online tool where basically it gives, it, it links with Google Classroom that we use within the school district, it also links with our student, uh, uh, information system where the results can get into that and we get to be able to track that, um, and so that way, as the teachers administer the assessment, if, you know, you have a superintendent conference day on, uh, or a half a day in December, the teachers are able to go back and look at the results of how the students perform on that common assessment. After they review those results, they make decisions based upon the results of those assessments. Either are there curriculum decisions that they need to be making within the classroom, are there issues with the questions that are on the exam that they need to make a modification in the exam when they, bless you, um, when they administer it the following school year? Then they are able to, the, the third bullet, making sure that the curriculum aligns to the state standards. How does every single question that's on those assessments link directly back, bless you, link directly back to the, the, the state standards? And finally, similar to what Matt said as well, the teachers have the ability to go through the, the aggregated data of all of the state assessments, that's what they did in the, in the various fall superintendent conference days. In the winter, this is coming up on, on February 2nd, again, as they continue to administer the common assessments, quarter two, the quarter two assessment for ELA is going to be administered at the end of January, in February, the teachers have the ability to be able to review that data once again and to make, make those curricular decisions in terms of making sure that they're meeting the student needs, as well as that data made conversation that I had earlier, we're in the process of integrating that tool to make sure that when the teachers are able to administer assessment-like opportunities for kids, it resembles the actual portal and experience that the students will see when they are sitting down to take the, to take the state exam. Finally, a, again, we have another superintendent conference day, uh, half day in March, the teachers will be able to take their common assessments and continue to do that work, as well as preparing the students in order to be able to, uh, sit down and take the assessments moving forward. And similar to, to what Matt said, moving forward, any of the modifications that we make, we have the ability to bake, uh, the, the, the plan together over summer curriculum work, and then administer any updated common assessments that we needed to make based upon tweaks and adjustments, and then continue that progress monitoring moving forward.
Is there a survey being done of teachers?
The difference, the difference at the secondary level is we don't have a, we don't have a program per se the way that they do at the elementary level, where our program is, is basically a standardized curriculum that we use internally, and those adjustments are mated on a continual basis, so the teachers have their own feedback based upon every single superintendent conference day, when they look at how the kids are performing on the common assessments, they immediately make the, the, the adjustments on the spot for the curriculum the following school year. If they feel like there's a, a book or a, a tool that they're using that's not working for them, they make that modification immediately and adjust it. It's very different than when you're using a traditional program like they're, than what they're using at the elementary level, so the, the teachers have a direct say on an ongoing basis because of the way that they meet, you know, as a department. So they, they have, they have like that instantaneous capacity to be able to do that.
This isn't working, let's, let's try this.
Yep, 100%, yep.
I have another question that I should have asked earlier, and I didn't think of it, with the computer-based testing.
Mm-hmm.
How are the students whose IEPs require being read to addressed?
So there, there's a couple of different ways, one, the assessment has the ability to be able to read the responses directly to the kids.
Without having a, a separate reader?
Correct, yep.
So when you, so.
Headphones, so that nobody else hears?
Yep. It's like an audiobook format, you know, but when you, and, and when we, we talked about DataMate as being one of those EdVista tools, you can, you know, one of the things that we're going to be looking into, do we, you know, do we put all our envisioned math assessments into DataMate so then teachers would have, you know, the option, um, in some cases to click on the, the Nextera button, so they can, you know, get the same results, but use, you know, the, the computer-based testing state, state format, so it's, it hits two different goals, right? It assesses students in terms of, of their performance, but also gives them some, some level of practice, and on that, there's an audio button that you can just click and it reads it to you.
Regents exams will often be computer-based?
I mean, they, they keep talking about it.
ACT and SED are getting there, so I think Regents.
Are they?
This year will be our first year.
That would eliminate the need for readers.
And, and I, I think that the difference with, with some of the things that we're talking about is, when we were exclusively paper-based, it would be teachers making copies of old exams, you know, that you can print up the released questions that are on the stated website, teachers copying excerpts of the exams and giving them to kids as practice. Now that the computers, that, that the, the assessments are administered on the computer, it's tools like DataMate that give the teachers the opportunity to be able to give those experiences without having to, you know, make copies and give the kids the, the printed versions.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Hassler and Mr. Kravitz? I want to thank you very much, it was a great presentation, we look forward to some other discussions and goals coming forward from.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome.
Next up on the agenda is the approval of the revised agenda, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from December 14th, 2022, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action items, acceptance of the 2021, 2022 internal audit reports and corrective action plans.
I have a question.
Sure.
Did the audit committee get the actual, um, plan that's going to be submitted on January 12th?
Was that, that, was that at the meeting?
Are you referring to the plans that are on the agenda that the board has accepted today, Stacy?
Yeah, so, and I'm sorry, I'm on my phone because I can't get onto it on my laptop, but, so it says in here, the implementation for the plan of action, is that a plan has been written and will be submitted by January 12th with a formal plan, so I'm just saying, do we, did the audit committee get that, because if, and I, because I don't, I don't necessarily see that, because I'm not on the audit committee.
The audit committee did get all these documents that are here.
Okay, so can that get shared with the board, because I'd like to read it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, but what she's talking about, the one that was submitted by the 12th, was that one submitted, that she's referring to?
But we're saying, which one are you referring to specifically, Stacy?
It's, so in the document that's attached here, it says the implementation plan of action in regards to the food service. It says, the food service manager has written a preliminary plan for the use of excess funds as a result of the early notification, he will formally respond to this and is, as the required deadline by January 12th with a formal plan.
Yes, we.
Okay.
We did, we have the plan, and we did, I believe we did submit it, I signed the plan, so that's been done, so.
Okay, can you just share that?
Sure, for the external audit, the, so that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
There's multiple things going on here, there's an internal audit, there's an internal risk assessment audit, then there's the focus audit, there's corrective action plans for both of those things, then there's an external audit, the corrective action plan. So you're specifically asking about the findings from the external audit, and then the corrective action plan, and our plan, uh, related to the excess fund balance for the school lunch fund, that was one of the findings. So, so I believe we have, we do have that in place, we have submitted that to the child nutrition unit, all this, submitted that, Aldis Sansons, our food service director, and he copied all the appropriate stakeholders, so we definitely can send that to you. I mean, it largely was about buying equipment that we've, uh, we've deferred, you know, for years, uh, buying some walking coolers, some other things, uh, so it's, it's kind of standard things that you typically do with a school lunch fund when you have that excess balance.
Was that submitted after the last audit meeting? Which was last week?
Yeah, I think, I think it was.
All right, I, I will check my email, because I don't recall seeing that update.
I don't remember seeing that either.
Okay.
I don't remember seeing the report, I know we talked about it.
I think, I think what we, you did see was the corrective action plan, which was shared with the audit committee, was, we're gonna, we're going to do these things, and then the specific form, which is what SED has, that has, you know, like areas for a narrative, that we didn't share.
Correct.
But the, the things that were in the corrective action plan, like formed the basis of the submission and the form, so if you, if you, when we looked at the corrective action plan, you, for all intents and purposes, you knew what the substance of that form was going to contain, but the specific form, which is an SED form, we did not share with the audit committee, but we can, we can share it with the whole board.
The audit committee, um, just as chair of the audit committee, we did review all of the documents that are attached, we went through them in detail, we didn't have any concerns, we obviously asked questions, um, and got clarification, so, um, as the chair of the committee, I do recommend that we accept the reports, um, but are there any other questions?
No, that's fine, I'm not, I just would like to read what we were using the funds for.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So if there's no other questions, can I have a motion to accept the, um, 9.1?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of 9.2, uh, separate, which is the corrective action plan resulting from 2021, motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, we are up to personnel.
I respectfully request board approval for the items listed under personnel.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Business and financial.
So, so I'd like to request that we table the letter of engagement with Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood, that's our bond counsel, which is under, uh, section 11.4, and the plan would be to approve a modified agreement at our next meeting, so we're negotiating with them regarding the fee, and they've agreed to lower the fee, so we, we want to approve that at our next meeting. Other than that, I would also respectfully request approval of the items under the business and financial section, 11.1 through 11.7.
Okay, so, um, the motion is to accept all the business and financial reports outside of that one contract, which will be indicated in the min, in the minutes?
Correct.
Do I have a motion for the business and financial? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education and preschool education, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Report by student representative.
So, this week I didn't get to go to that many schools because of winter break and the flu, but I luckily was still able to get a lot of work done. I had several meetings in the high school to give some student input on different events and also possible changes in the upcoming school years. I'm part of different student groups like PTSA and Student Council, and the high school administration came to speak to each group, um, to discuss what kind of electives we want to see in the upcoming years, and discuss what school schedule we think would work best for us as students, whether that be nine periods or block schedule, or like any other schedule that the building committee would be thinking of. So each person in these different groups gave their opinion, and the student council is working with communications to distribute a Google form to students on what schedules they may like to see, and what schedule would help them really learn and attain as much information as possible. Midterms are coming up in the high school, and most of the Regents classes are taking midterms during block week, and this week we also had different branches of military come in during lunch period, so students could be introduced to post-high school options that may not necessarily include college. There's also an event for high school juniors that I just wanted to spread the message about, and it's called post-high school planning for juniors and their parents, so both can get started thinking about the college process next year and how the Common Application works. All you have to do is register by Friday, and the event is Thursday, January 9th, or 19th. Um, and I also visited Pine Tree this week, who loved their Read-a-Thon and are close to meeting their all-school goal once again by earning hearts through showing kindness and empathy in the classroom. When I visited on Monday, the school had earned 123 out of 150 hearts, and when they earn those hearts, they earn, um, a winter wonderland once they reach 150. We also had a very interesting conversation about languages and the language classes they'll be able to take when they reach middle school, and they told me all the reasons they're excited for when they reach the age to learn French, Italian, and Spanish, so I hope to, um, meet with more schools this month.
Excellent, thank you. Reports by Board of Education committees, um, as I mentioned before, the audit committee had a meeting, reviewed the reports, I don't have any other items to report at this time. Visitation?
We, uh, visited two buildings, uh, this past cycle, uh, first we went to Smith Cove, uh, they've, uh, put in a new PA system, which, uh, with Bluetooth, which they were very happy about, because they now can play music through the PA for the students, um, they've also been, uh, implementing, uh, the new door locks, uh, for safety throughout the building, which is a, a much-needed upgrade. On the downside, they need boiler, roof, uh, outside lighting, and as, to improve security with a vestibule, all of which were unfortunately shot down with the, uh, Capitol Project, um, hopefully we could find something in the future to fix that. Ed Center, not much has changed here, uh, we took a look, boilers are from 78, they're using oil, they're horribly inefficient, um, they have been putting in some interior doors, uh, for safety throughout the building, uh, but other than that, not much has changed. Our next visit will be on February 1st to the bus garage.
Thank you, any questions? And then policy?
We haven't met at all this year, but we will be meeting at 8:00 AM. I know, I know. I had to throw that in. We are meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, here.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you. Reports by Board and Central Office, Ms. Carver.
Have a good night.
Oh, I'd like to thank Mr. Kravitz and Dr. Hassler for their very informative presentation, and I hope everyone had an enjoyable and restful break and ready to get back to work, and have a nice evening.
Yes, gentlemen, we're all done, uh, thank you for all the questions, hopefully you didn't feel like it was a firing squad in any way, um, and I, you know, I think everybody would agree that reading is obviously, if not your number one priority, it's really close, it's a 1A, so, um, it's important work that you're all doing, you have some great reading teachers personally for my kids, that had, you know, IEPs in reading, and the, the teachers did an amazing job, so you got a wealth of knowledge down there to help you all achieve that. Jenna, I don't believe for a second that the flu stopped you, I've known you for a very long time, I don't think that will happen. Uh, welcome back, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for the presentation, it was great, and, um, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Have a great night, what they said.
Want to congratulate, uh, high school senior, Rohan Sanakia, he was the recipient of the, uh, 2022 New York State recommendation, uh, from Senator Scoofers, a really good job by the officer.
When the holidays are over, it's very easy to quickly put them behind us as we focus on a new year, but I want to recognize the efforts of our administrators and our teachers in keeping the holidays special for our students, allowing them to have fun, whether it was through themed days, holiday concerts, art projects, um, door decorating contests, thank you for making time special and letting kid, our kids be kids.
Some condolences to the Hoskins family, I, uh, I had the privilege of knowing Ms. Hoskins, both professionally as an educator.
And as a parent of a child that went through her classroom, and her passing is a, a loss on many, many levels, so condolences to them, um, congratulations to Rohan, I agree, also congratulations to our poetry Out Loud winners, and Yaheli Cruz and Daya Mangat, that they will be competing in the regional competition next month at SUNY New Paul, so congratulations to them.
Thanks.
So in an effort, I'm sorry, is it my turn? I just, sorry, um, in an effort to increase the, um, awareness and programs that we have in the district, one of the programs that we started a few years back was our universal pre-gay, pre-k program, um, today, uh, communication went out across, it's on our website, and went out to select parents, um, encouraging those who have a student or have a child who's going to be four by December 1st of 2023, that they would be eligible for a UPK seat, we do have three classrooms at Sapphire, we have, um, classrooms at Little Pals, which is also in Harriman, and we have classrooms right now currently at Kids Corner, there is a subsequent RFP that was put out, or will be in the newspaper tomorrow, um, asking if there are any other local agencies who would qualify if they'd also be interested in joining our UPK program, I think they have until January 25th to get us that information back, and if there are any agencies, um, who are interested, then we would look for potential board approval on February 8th. The one big thing to know is that the questionnaire that went out today, um, parents have until January 31st to fill it out, because we'd like to hold our lottery soon after, but we want, we, we wanted to have a cutoff date to make sure that, um, everybody gets their, their information into us, so if you out there in the listening audience, I'm sure it's, you know, thousands and thousands at this point, um, if you know of a student or a child who may qualify for this, or a family who's interested in this, um, please have them fill out the questionnaire, that's important, thank you.
Is that going to be shared on social media, so that we can share it ourselves?
It is, yeah, it is, and it has been, and so, if you go onto our website, it's listed under our, um, our news events, and so it's right there, and it's right on the first page of our website as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, so I'd just like to thank and acknowledge the donors to the John J. Tomasic Memorial Scholarship Fund, uh, was on the agenda this evening for their generosity and thoughtfulness, and I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the group, The Journey of Hudson Valley, for their financial donation to the district to, uh, pay account balances for free and their financial donation to the district to pay account balances for free and reduced students. For the, some of their balances were in arrears, uh, so, uh, very thankful for that, for thinking of the district and those families and students. And I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
I want to follow up on the free and reduced. Uh, I was looking at the governor's recommendation for, uh, the budget, and one of the things that she's put in is free lunch and breakfast for all children, so that may be a possibility. I think that would be a good thing where we don't have to worry about who's going to get their next meal. Um, I want to thank both Eric and Matt for your presentation. I think it's a really good, uh, start, and it's important for us to know where we are, to know where we're going, and we will certainly have goals set and share that with the board. Um, I had the privilege of hiring Denise